May we have the Pleasantville agents, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call?
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
All right. Well, we'll start off with something fun, introduction of a new officer, I think.
Is Chief here? Yeah, is, well, you want to tell Kevin?
Hi.
How are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good.
Well, I'll do it since Chief Noack is MIA at the moment. We're proud to introduce our newest Pleasant Ridge Police Officer, Jody Lippa. She is an experienced officer who came, came to Pleasant Ridge from another department. And you started in?
April.
April, okay. So it's been a few months now, but she's fit in great.
I think I've met most.
Hit the ground running, yeah.
Most people.
And we always like to introduce our new police officers to put a face behind the name and badge. And with that, Jody, I don't know if you'd like to say anything?
Yeah, I'm like a veteran by now, I've met a lot of the community. I'm feeling very welcomed, I appreciate the opportunity to work at the city of Pleasant Ridge. Everyone that I've met has been very, very humbling and very kind. And that's, that's always good for someone that's new to the area, to the community, pretty much to the surrounding areas. So I, I really appreciate that. The department, I'm fitting in, I, I think. Aside from being the only female, I really appreciate Kirsten being across the hall. But all of the, all the guys in the department have been very helpful and very kind as well as the community. And I look forward to working here and serving the city of Pleasant Ridge.
We're happy you're here.
Yeah, we're happy you're here.
I brought my parents.
Oh, let's meet them. Let's meet them.
Stephanie and John.
So which one of them was the cop when you were growing up?
Neither.
Neither.
My dad is a farmer and retired postal carrier. My mom retired from school, she was a kindergarten paraprof. She did that for almost forty years. So really, she's like, you know, she was like the school police.
That's cool.
So I'm very thankful for them and again, thank you for everyone welcoming me to the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Welcome to Pleasant Ridge, so happy to have you. All right, we'll move on to public discussions or items that are not on the agenda. Ted?
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, staff, viewers. I'm Ted Zachary from sixty-eight Devonshire. And I want to say thank you very much for the sympathy card and the gift that you had bestowed on Judy. As you know, you might not know, one of Judy's causes of death was cancer, and that's probably why I'm here. Because I found out that the city uses Roundup in the area, picnic area, the play area, and Gainesboro Park. So I'm very concerned about that. And that's used, okay, there's another part that Roundup is being sued, twelve billion dollars. And that's a significant amount. And I found out too that Roundup is not used in Ferndale, Huntington Woods, and Birmingham. Knowing all that, I think it's good to know that, once you're not using my visual aid, Roundup. I put it in a bag so that any fumes would not go out. And I have another part of my visual aid, an alternative to Roundup, that the city could use or homeowners could use. Susie?
One gallon of white vinegar, one cup of, can you hear me loud, am I loud enough?
Please come up.
I'm good, I think I'm good here. You want me to come for?
Got to give your name, got to give your name and address.
One gallon of white vinegar, one cup of salt, one tablespoon of dish soap will kill the weeds safely. That's for you, I know you like that. All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Susie.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Susie. I, I read the instructions on it, and it says you could walk on it after it dries, but it's effective for up to four months. I wonder about that. So I'm, I'm asking you to really consider not using Roundup in the city of Pleasant Ridge. That's, that's my, that's my two cents.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ted.
No, thank you very much.
Oh, I probably should mention a couple of other things. There's going to be a moth kind of talk, a storytelling talk, near the time of the movies that we have at the rec center. And I thought that would be really great to do, so that we can communicate, tell stories, true stories, no notes, like all these. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Were there any other items from the public tonight? Okay. We'll move on to liaison reports. Commissioner Perry with Planning and DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission and DDA met on Monday, August twenty-eighth. The Planning Commission focused on the master plan and reviewing the request for proposal that the city manager will be sending out to planning firms in mid-October. The scope of the services include land use and community development, Michigan Department of Natural Resources compliant parks and recreation plans, and transportation, including motor vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrian facilities. This involve, this involved discussions about, they also were discussing like tree policies and environmental issues. They also were talking about historical continuity and the parks. And, you know, making sure that those things would be part of the master plan conversation. And there are also land use zoning issues, senior housing, auxiliary dwelling units, as were also part of the discussion. Now, next year, we will have a good public process, including surveys and public meetings and outreach, so that everybody can really get involved. And, you know, it's one of those great things to pay attention to. You know, we have a survey going on now, but this will be another survey that'll go on and include that. And, you know, as we're all seeing, so many things are changing all around us, between traffic and cycling and environmental things. It's a great time for everyone to weigh in on what's important to them and what they want to see in Pleasant Ridge. Then the Downtown Development Authority got an update on the progress of the Woodward streetscape construction and the progress. We had a good drone video that Jim had done, which showed they were, concrete is being poured and all of that, it's all moving forward. The next Planning Commission and DDA meetings will be held on Monday, October twenty-third, at seven PM at City Hall. So I hope you guys can join us here. Thanks.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd add is that we'll be bringing the RFP to the City Commission in October to approve before we send that out.
Oh, yeah.
Stay tuned.
All right, Commissioner Schmier with Historical Commission.
Ooh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So the big news, September twenty-third, ten AM to four PM is the Home and Garden Tour. There is going to be six houses. So a few things to know, tickets are on sale now, twenty-five dollars a ticket, thirty dollars if you wait until the day of, so don't wait. Also, we are still looking for a few more docents. So a docent helps for two hours, they're assigned to a home. And if you are a docent, you get a discounted ticket, plus you get an invite to the Afterglow Party, which is a great event. So, and docenting is so much fun, actually, it's a great, it's a great time. So if anyone is interested in being a docent, please reach out to me or to the Historical Commission. Anyone on the Historical Commission. And again, Home and Garden Tour, September twenty-third, the museum will also be open the same day. And it's also a good time to make another loop around and see the DIA Inside Out art at the same time. So that's it. Buy your tickets, be a docent, come to the Afterglow Party.
That's it.
That's it, I mean.
It's big.
Yeah, it's big, but it's really going to be a great event. And the Historical Commission has been working hard, and the gardens and the homes are gorgeous. So it really, really will be a fun day and a great event.
Thanks, Katie.
That's it, thank you, Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Budnick with the Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. The Rec Commission did not meet last month. Some updates, though, and some news. New group exercise classes are beginning this month, so check the website for class dates. They'll be featuring yoga, sit and get fit, zumba, and many more. The monthly movie series begins on Thursday, nine twenty-one, at twelve and six PM. The movie is Barbie, rated PG thirteen.
Wow.
Yeah. That should be a fan favorite.
Already?
Yeah.
Wow, that's cool.
Isn't that great? Inside Out DIA Bus Tour is Thursday, September twenty-eighth, at six-thirty. So come learn more about the nine masterpieces that Commissioner Schmier just alluded to, located all around the city. The, another favorite here in Pleasant Ridge is the Fall Hay Ride Fest, is Sunday, October eighth, from four to six. This is always a very well-attended event, a lot of kids and fun. So come for loads of family fun, T-shirts, the notorious Then and Now books will be on sale during the event, so grab one of those. And the Teen Trip to Cedar Point is on Saturday, October twenty-first. It's an all-day trip for teens ages thirteen and older, so feel free to invite your friends, too.
How much older?
You can go, Brett. You would, you would, that'd work for you.
Okay.
You'd make the cut. And last and final note, the Recreation Department would like to thank all of the residents for all their kind words this summer. The summer staff really worked hard to provide a safe and memorable summer for everyone's families. So they want to thank us on behalf of Greg, Shawnee, and the, the rec team. And next Rec Commission meeting is October the twenty-fifth, if anyone would like to join us. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chris. And Ferndale Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So schools back in session, the big update is Homecoming is October thirteenth, so mark calendars, parade and game. So that's the biggest update out of the schools. But again, I encourage folks to go to the website, check for updates, and if there's something more you'd like to see at this update, please let me know.
Thanks, Alex.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right. A consideration of the consent agenda. In this one, we have some very basic items that are normally in our consent agendas, and we also include information about the youth assistant request for support. We have a motion.
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. And now we'll move on to the item that has most of you here tonight. We'll talk about the liquor license for Romolo. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. On the agenda tonight is a public hearing, after which the City Commission can consider the application. We did have four people provide written comment to us before the meeting. But the, the applicant has provided a complete application. There is some discrepancy, I guess, between some parts of the application that would need to be cleaned up before the final documents are signed, if approved. That could happen at a staff level, after commission approval with your, whatever your resolution is, whatever the guidance was in there. Section eighteen dash two twenty-five, subsection four of the City Code of Ordinances sets forth a number of review factors when a liquor license application comes to the City Commission. There's a number of things in there, the general, such as the general appropriate trend and character of land, building population development, appropriate relationship between buildings and land uses, impact of the establishment on surrounding businesses and neighborhoods, input from residents and surrounding business owners, crowd control, vehicular movement, parking availability, et cetera. Subsection five establishes that after review, these, and public hearing, the City Commission, if you are satisfied, that the establishment or operation will provide a benefit to the city and constitute an asset to the community, you may adopt a resolution granting approval, subject to the satisfaction of any conditions stated in the resolution. And that the city and applicant are entering into a mutually acceptable agreement, outlining the details of the operation of the establishment, which may include, but not limited to, site regulation, hours of operation, and parking requirements. So those are the ordinance standards around a review for a liquor license application. With every liquor license we've issued, there's been a plan of operation, and then also an operating agreement, which are entered into and signed by both the city and the business, and that establishes the ground rules by which that business will operate with a liquor license as approved by the City Commission. So there were a number of items identified by the City Commission at the August meeting. Those were summarized, and the applicants provided a letter, which was in the agenda packet, provided to you and available for public review before the meeting, with their response to those items. And you can go over those with the applicant, either before or after the public hearing, although probably after the public hearing would be appropriate. So with that, I have nothing further to add. We'll add the written comments, and I can summarize those at the end of the public hearing. And if there's any questions for me now, I can answer those, or we can proceed.
Did anyone have questions specific for Jim, before we go into the public hearing? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, I will call the public hearing into order. Does anyone like to make any comment?
I will.
Sure, please.
One thing I noticed in
You could give your name and address, sorry.
I'm Jay Kleiman from eight Fairwood. And living on the first block of Fairwood, the main thing we're worried about is parking and traffic. And I noticed that in the original plan for, that they submitted to you guys, it said that when the valet parking parks, that they could not park in the Fairwood lot. They couldn't park the valeted cars in the Fairwood lot. But in the response to your concerns under valet parking, they specifically said that they could use the Fairwood lot, which is a problem for the residents, because that's what happened with Cork. The valet filled up the parking lot, and then all the people who parked on their own parked on Fairwood. So I'd like clarification on that, because the original plan said no, and the response for this meeting says yes, they can. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that had comment? Yes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Craig Bentley, I'm in one Fairwood, that's Frank back here, he's going to stay, stay back there, he doesn't want to talk. So first and foremost, I want to welcome the new business, because I haven't told Kelly this, but being the last few years, it's been kind of sad not having, operating business next to us. I can't tell you how many times people would stop me when I'm working in the yard and saying, hey, what's going on with Cork, you know? So the, one of the things I was really happy about with some of the issues that came up that were addressed at the previous meeting I wasn't at, was the fact that they did address them, and the fact that the communication is, is key. I would say a lot of my neighbors here from Fairwood were rather friendly block. I'm not going to say we're the best block in Fairwood. We all have, you know, our opinions on that, but as long as we can keep that line of communication open. The one thing I was concerned about was I noticed, you know, I think Cork closed at ten on that Thursday, and right now it says they want to stay open until midnight. And those of us who are a little older and have regular jobs and school night, work night kind of situation, if they're open to midnight, having worked at restaurants and establishments in New York, when I lived there, I know, you know, you tend to be there past that time cleaning up and stuff, and just during the summer months when the windows are open and noise and things of that nature, that's the only concern I have. The weekends are great, you know, have fun. We look forward to have somewhere to gather, and we had our holiday parties there a few times when Cork was open. So that was the main thing. The other thing I want to mention, in the letter, they said that there is no northbound egress, or actually, that is us. When we come out of our garage, that's the direction we go in. And for most of Fairwood, because it's closed off and we can't exit onto Woodward off our street, we tend to go up the alley to Sylvan and out. So just keeping that as clear as possible, and, you know, with delivery trucks and things of that nature. Other than that, we're happy to have some new neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that would like to make comment? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
I'll summarize the written compliment.
Okay, sure.
So we did get four, two from Fairwood, one from Sylvan, one from Woodward Heights. One comment from Sylvan was concerned with spillover parking. So a concern about on-street parking from the business, parking on the residential block of Fairwood, but also parking on the residential block of Sylvan. I would note that the permit parking zone is still in effect on Sylvan. When the law office tapered down and stopped operating there, that became less of an issue to enforce, but that still exists, and we can continue to enforce permit parking on that block of Sylvan. We had a comment from Woodward Heights urging approval. Happy to have a new business in town to operate and activate the building again. Our Fairwood comments, we had one that was concerned primarily with noise, traffic, and parking, noting that there are a lot of families with younger children on that block of Fairwood now. And then actually, a comment from Mr. Bentley, who you summarized your, your email very well.
Consistent.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. All right. I think we're up to receiving a motion and then having some conversation about the proposal. And I, actually, even before we do that, would Romolo like to say anything before we make a motion?
Sure, if there's something specific you want us to clarify or address in the comments around the parking plan.
We, what, maybe what we'll do then is just make a motion, and then as comment comes up, we'll have them speak. Is that okay?
Well, you can have them speak first.
Okay. All right, why don't you go ahead and just introduce yourself and?
Good evening, thank you for the, the comments and the feedback. Totally understand the parking concern, noise concern, we get it. Like I mentioned, it behooves us to be a good neighbor to you guys, which is why we want to be here. So definitely want to get the parking situation sorted out and discuss the hours of operation and any other concerns. But we appreciate the support.
And we're very excited, as you can imagine, to move forward.
Amen. Sorry, it's been a long time.
There is a little confusion on the Fairwood lot, and I just wanted to go back in history a little bit as to how that lot came to be. So when I bought the building back in oh-eight, the parking for that building was across Fairwood at the doctor's office. And Mark Johnson, who was the former owner, and I got together, we knew there was a city grant available, and we went and pitched that, that would help support the restaurant and be, possibly become a public lot. And that's kind of the history of that.
How it came to be.
Yeah, so, you know, I know, we only had valet parking on Fridays and Saturdays, or if there was a special event. So I know the valet would kind of take over that lot. But at the same time, the cost of the valet was, was taken in by the restaurant, we weren't passing that on to customers. And we put valet in there to help control the situation, instead of just letting people double park and park up and down the Fairwood and Sylvan and other places. We thought that, that offered a little more control. So that was the whole reason valet was put in to begin with. So just to clarify
Sure.
Historically what was done.
Right. And I suspect you'll hear a lot of questions about hours of operation, particularly around Thursdays and Sundays. How strongly do you feel about the hours of operation after ten PM on Thursday?
Well, I mean, obviously, we're business, so if we're closed, we're not making money, but at the same time, want to be, you know, empathetic to, to the neighbors. So we could, we could make some concessions on closing time on Thursday, for sure.
I think part of the, the challenge we have is that, as we look at where restaurants have gone since the pandemic, there isn't else, a lot else open after ten PM?
Right.
So it could be that, this could be a very popular spot after ten, but that could also be an issue for the neighborhood, that it is a very popular spot after ten. So particularly on that Thursday night. There's probably a little bit more to choose from on a Sunday night, oddly, than a, than a Thursday, because most, a lot of places are closed on Monday.
Yeah.
So.
There might be a staffing concern, too.
Right.
It's sort of chicken and egg, but, but yeah, I mean, we could, ten o'clock on Thursday would be fine.
Okay.
And Sunday night, we were not planning on being open Sunday nights on a regular basis, right?
We got four o'clock.
Yeah.
Well, we, we were gonna, we looked at extending it if we were going to lose hours or be closed another day, but if there's an
You wanted flexibility.
Yeah.
Well, in the document that we received, there were discrepancies. We received one thing that said Sunday staying open until ten PM, and we received something else saying midnight.
Right.
So what is the?
The request would be ten.
The request would be ten?
Would, what were, would you consider like nine PM on that? Just because it's a little bit earlier of an evening for families and stuff, too.
So nine PM. And, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to, I don't know, but
Please.
To the mayor's point, you know, I did spend time looking at, you know, kind of comparable restaurants, well, comparable and also kind of broader. And I think adjusting the times, in my opinion, is a better fit for our community, you know? And I think a lot of what we need to decide here is if this is a good fit, right? Like for you and for us, is this a good fit? So, you know, having this as a late-night destination point might be what you want, but it might not fit well, especially because it's so embedded into the city, and you have houses so close.
Right.
So cutting back Thursday to ten PM and Sunday to nine PM certainly would be my preference. Keeping the weekends up until midnight.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know that we want to be a late-night destination, it's kind of, like I said, we would rather have the discussion and get the approval, if we needed to close or something, have that opportunity. And like I said last time, I'm going to be chained to the restaurant, so I'm going to be there. So going home now or early is not necessarily going to be, you know.
Carryout was a thought in that, too.
The other component to it.
We don't even know that we would stay open that late for public seating.
Might just be carryout.
Carryout, you know, if we get carryout orders late, it would allow us time to get those out the door.
Which is next on my list, actually. So right now, the way the building is set up, there is actually the space directly behind the building. And you mentioned in your report that that would be for delivery, or, you know, in your responses, that you would keep those spots. But part of my concern is also carryout. I mean, we know number one pizza, carryout, also COVID and Grubhub and everything. I mean, I order all the time and go and pick up. So I want to make sure that there is a plan in place for that in-and-out carryout traffic. So my question really is, what is the plan for that? Are those spaces also going to be carryout spaces? And how are we going to communicate that to people so they're not, again, circling around up and down streets, double parking? I think I admitted last time, I'm not the best carryout parker. So, you know, to make sure people are not like me, but again, giving them a place. So what is the plan for the carryout people and the communication of where to park for them?
I know we included something for the delivery services, which the idea was I know we included something for the delivery services, which the idea was kind of adjacent to where the dumpster, I guess, essentially, to coming through the alley and then exit back out that way, which hopefully would minimize alley traffic and...
So that would be north, you're saying?
Correct.
So they would come in the alley off of what, Sylvan and then...
Correct, just, just for like DoorDash, Grubhub, that kind of thing. Because they can use the back entrance, there's a place right there where they can grab the food and go. For regular customers, I don't know, short of telling them not to park illegally, because it would be a situation of pulling in the lot, getting your food and going.
Right.
I don't know that we could designate, I mean, I guess we could back there, but it would still, then it would might clog up the alley more.
I mean, if you go to like certain places, Vincenta Garage, they do have a spot for carryout.
You have 10, you know, 10-minute parking, carryout spots.
I mean, we could, we could definitely look into that.
I mean, it seems to me that there is space behind, that you could put in perpendu, spots. You could potentially put in three spots at there.
Three or four that go nose in to the restaurant.
That go nose in, that allow people for carryout and delivery. But again, how, how is that going to be communicated? It's one of my other questions, to make sure people know, you know...
Follow the rules.
Right. Well, Mayor, if I could, and I have an idea regarding sending folks to the right places and helping with parking. And having a QR code on your online menu that denotes parking for dining in is here, showing the Wellesley lot or on-street parking. And then parking for Grubhub, DoorDash is here. And having a map, I think so if someone's ordering online, that, that could at least give some folks the idea of where to head and orient them. So that, that might prevent some of it.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah.
But I like having the idea of really dedicated short-term carry-in, carry-out spaces. Because that's the, that's, you know, going to increase just the flow of traffic. And it will also hopefully free up spots for people who are, want to actually come in and sit down and have a meal.
Right.
So...
One thing I, correct me if I'm wrong, one thing I understood from the last meeting was trying to minimize that alley traffic. Hence why we only really focused on the DoorDash delivery service to go in that way. But there are spots we could utilize behind the building.
I mean, if in the Fairwood lot, there are carryout spots even better. But I just want to know what the plan is because we live in a world now too where people are carrying out. So we can control our, maybe the delivery. But carryout becomes a whole different conversation.
Like is there a plan for actual, for signage and stuff like that?
Well, for the, for the DoorDash, because again, we were trying to minimize the alley traffic. So, but we can do the same thing for, for regular carryout and utilize the back of the building.
I also wanted to talk about parking a little bit. There were, again, in the documentation, there were discrepancies. So on my side too, I would like that corrected so that we don't have the discrepancies. But there was, you know, page one of the operating agreement, which said, Fairwood lot, no parking on Fairwood as a street. And then we had something else that said the Wellesley lot. So I need to understand what the plan is really for parking. Is it going to be the Fairwood lot? Are we directing people to Wellesley? And beyond that, I'd like something even more specific, saying not just not on Fairwood, but whether, you know, Sylvan, expanding out from there, you know, what about the other streets? You know, we don't want people...
The problem is if we don't have valet, how do we control? I mean, it's not like we're going to be in the parking lot or in the outside telling people where to park. I mean, this QR code is a great idea. But, I mean, it's going to be up to the public to legally park their own cars, just like you or I'd go to Royal Oak or Burndale or Birmingham or wherever. We, you know, look for a legal parking spot, yeah.
So I think some of that is signage. If this lot is full, here is the other lot. But that is a question, I mean, and I, I understand what you're saying.
Which we saw Whistlestop utilizing signage to get people to that Wellesley lot.
Well, and that's why the valet, you know, was originally put in place was to help control the parking and to help the neighborhood and the city, you know? That was a cost to the restaurant to do that. But on the busy days, Friday, Saturday night, then we are in more control. If somebody's using that valet service, we can tell the valet, no, you can't park there. You gotta go down to Wellesley or, you know, you have to look for on Woodward parking or whatever it may be. So that, you know, that's kind of historically why the valet was put in place as an additional service to, to control the traffic.
Right. And I appreciate that with the valet, I mean, I think it's a great idea. But I also think we need to look a little bit bigger into the days when we're not doing valet and saying, how are we, how are we going to communicate with people to keep them as much as possible? And I know things happen, but to keep them going to the right places and off of, and, and as much as possible off of the street. So, you know, what is, how can we...
So the streets that they would park on would be Fairwood or Sylvan, right? Is, so I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand, is there resident parking only on those streets permit?
Sylvan and Fairwood.
Currently Sylvan. Sylvan submitted a petition amongst the residents of that block to establish permit parking only. Fairwood for the first block has not yet. But that is available to Fairwood residents to establish residential parking only.
Couldn't that be put in place to, to help?
Could be.
Rob's involved.
But I think it's...
There'd be a citizen petition and following the same, right.
Yeah.
But I still think it needs to be a joint effort, right? Because we can say all day long, permit parking, that doesn't change the fact that people won't be trying to park there too. So help on the restaurant side, communicating again, the places to park, I think is really helpful in, on all sides, trying to manage what's going to happen, so...
I think that QR code then is very probably important because that can be, I mean, they're already, it's on the menu. They don't see it till they come in, but if they're looking on our website, some kind of communication on the website.
Very common now that people will go to the website first before choosing a restaurant. So I think it'll catch on.
And I don't know if in the beginning, and I know this is way overstepping what I should say, whatever, but the, instead of like a valet, you could even have someone who's just helping give out information on parking. I think, honestly, I think Whistlestop did that for a while. They were really trying to get the information out there because they were having so much overflow parking and just helping direct people like go up there at the, another block. Because you were, you know, we were talking about the valets not parking in Fairwood. So it's like they're gonna have to go upside, off-site. But it's like just helping direct them with even a note card or something like that or pointing them.
Yeah, I think we can control bill insert websites, social media, et cetera, you know?
Signage.
Signage.
Physical signage. And on my side, yes, just having more clarification of that in writing, what the plan is, you know? Things are fluid.
Should we take out the valet option or leave it in or is that...
No, I, I mean, I personally, and I'll let everyone else speak now, because, but I think that I'm okay with the valet. But again, I would like to know...
What, what else?
You know, what the plan is. Is it going to be the Fairwood lot? Is it going to be the Wellesley lot? And I'll let others people speak more to kind of traffic flow. But I would like to have a better understanding of what the thought and plan is on that. But I know if you want to, if anyone wants to.
Yeah, Mayor, something that we were chatting about before and that we've heard a little bit of, but you have an audience here, walk us through your concept. Like what are we, what is this restaurant going to be? Give us a little taste of what, what to expect. And I think that's important to get some buy-in and understand what, what we're looking at.
The, the starring role is Roman-style pizza, which anybody's ever been to Italy, been to Rome, that's the pizza from Rome. Not so many people doing it in the US, nobody in Michigan, so we'll be first person to do that. So lunch will be, you know, pizza by the slice, sandwiches, salads, you know, lighter fare. Dinner, we'll have the pizza and then we'll also have a lot of small plates, charcuterie, maybe a pasta. So not too much into entree, not too much into like the fine dining, but upscale still elevated pizza, elevated concept. And beer and wine, assuming everything goes forward.
Full bar.
Yeah, full bar.
Yes.
Yeah.
We, we, we're trying to make it more approachable to the neighborhood. At the price point in a gathering place and, you know, to, we're going to take charcuterie kind of to a different level. And then the pizza, you know, it'll be more shareables and stuff like that, that...
It's communal, that is communal, right? Try a bunch of different things, come with friends, come with family.
Is there a bike rack?
Good, good question. There was a bike rack. And I've been, I've been talking to Jim about replacing the bike rack. And I think, I think you at one point okayed us to go get a bike rack and turn the bill into the city. So there was a bike rack to, just to the south of the patio. And pre-COVID, somebody came around the corner too fast and thank God the bike rack was there or they would have probably been through...
The building.
Through the building. They took that out and that stopped them from, they actually ended up bumped into the planter boxes out on the patio. Upside down.
That was wild.
So yeah, we would, we would love to have that replaced. And then we could add an additional bike rack somewhere on the property too.
Yeah.
Because that's our hope that, you know, we attract more bikers, walkers, you know, neighborhood-friendly.
I know, I think you both had to sit through our hour-long Woodward Streetscape, one of the meetings. So you get to see the cycle track and, you know, what a, what a nice way to marry that together and have, just a way to reduce maybe even a few parked cars.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think that's something that I would entertain. It sounds like you already had one, but we'll work on that. That's all I have, Mayor, for now. Thank you.
Were there any other comments for them?
I, I think, oh, one thing, Mr. Bentley's comment about the delivery vehicles in the alley...
That was it?
Was a good one. I, I'm interested in how you want to handle that, because we don't want to see delivery vehicles stopping and blocking the travel lane in the alley. This is a fairly frequently used stretch, so what's, what's the plan for that?
So most of the deliveries come during the day. I mean, everything is kind of morning to, I mean, we need everything in there. And it actually, with the lunch being added too, we really need early deliveries. So we can't have anybody stopping in the alley, but the best place for them to pull up is right by that kitchen door. So we would need to keep that clear so they could pull up there, unload, get paid and be on their way.
So is it then deliveries would occur before you're open?
Yeah, I mean, they start coming, I mean, your, the lunch will, Dario will be there in the morning, but...
Yeah, because I mean, the conflict is if you have, if you have DoorDash or somebody picking up and they're parked in those spaces and the delivery vehicle is trying to get there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, no, we're talking from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. I would think most deliveries would happen by then. And we, we also can request, you know, sometimes we have to get a last-minute wine delivery or wherever it may be. We can't really control the liquor commission, they come whenever they want. But for the most part, food and produce and all that, we can, we can specify early morning delivery.
Okay. And I, I assume you could also work with your staff to make sure that they know that if there's a during-business-hours delivery and they're parked in the alley, you're going to have to get them out of there.
Yep.
And the other thing with the new concept, we're not going to have as many deliveries as Cork had. I mean, we had an extensive menu, an extensive wine list, pretty much everything. So I would say it'd be probably half the deliveries that, from the vendors that Dario's been working with, we don't have as many vendors.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Fair concern, for sure.
And then, which goes along with that, one of the concerns that, that Craig had spoken about too in his email is the, I don't know how long the deliveries are taking, but a lot of times the trucks will sit and idle. Which, you know, with the houses, the homes so close and everything like that and the exhaust fumes that are set off from that, if you can help encourage them not to and tell, yeah, either move fast or just turn off the vehicle.
I think there was a lot of chit-chat going on.
No chit-chat. Or turn off the truck, one or the other.
Okay.
Kind of thing, thank you.
May I ask one more question, just about, more specific to the valet? Can you explain what the process will be for that valet, valet, valet in terms of location of pickup, drop-off and how you see those cars driving through?
So historically, and I don't, I don't know if there's any other options, but we'd be open to ideas and other options. They pull off Woodward into the Fairwood lot. There's a valet guy right there, there's a little, there's still a little shed where the keys are kept. They drop their car there, go in and the valet parks their car there. He also brings it back to that same spot.
So say the Fairwood lot fills up, where are they going from there?
Well, they'd have to go down to Wellesley would be the first choice.
Okay, and what's the path? What was the...
For the valet guy?
Yeah, what, what's kind of the driving path?
So if he's coming through...
It's three right turns, correct?
Yeah, you'd have to go, you gotta go right. So he'd have to go back up Woodward, down to Wellesley and enter off to Woodward.
So out, right on the alley, right on Woodward Heights, right on Woodward?
Yeah, because you can't go left, right? There's, it's a one-way.
You can go left? You can't...
It's a one-way.
It's a one-way.
It's a one-way from there, okay.
You go right onto Woodward Heights, right onto Woodward, right onto the Wellesley lot.
Okay. So that's how you're getting to Wellesley? And then from Wellesley, when you're returning the cars, do you remember what that path looks like?
Entering off Woodward again, coming into Fairwood and then that, then the customer's doing the same thing, making the right and going back out to Woodward.
And when you're returning the car from Wellesley to Fairwood, are you going up Wellesley to Indiana or are you going around Woodward?
They have to go onto Woodward to get back into that Fairwood.
Got it, so they're making the U-turn and back on that. So it's not hitting Wellesley or Indiana or Fairwood down?
Right.
Okay, and then delivery back in the Fairwood lot?
Yeah, same spot that was drop-off is the same pickup spot.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
How likely are you to actually do valet?
I mean, we were planning on it and then, you know, but if the Fairwood lot, if we can't utilize that Fairwood lot on the weekends, we would then have, if we had to take every car down to Wellesley or further, say we rented space from the oil chain shop or something like that, we would probably have to have two valet guys. And I don't think the business could afford to cover the cost of that.
Were there any other questions for them?
I'm just speaking, Mayor. With the valet quagmire, if, if it gets to a problem with parking, that, that obviously means you need more valet. If, if the business is running that well and it's that busy and you need more, that you'll probably have, you'll be in a better position to afford more. So I don't know if we're, we're creating a solution for a problem we don't have yet. Just something, something to consider and...
I think that was kind of where I was, my head was at is that.
Yeah.
This kind of restaurant in this space is new for this space, so there's going to be some learning.
Absolutely.
And the restaurant industry in general is learning right now. So, so I, I think if this is approved, it's with the understanding that we're going to have some things to work out for that first six months to a year or whatever, to really get it fine-tuned. And just to make sure that the license gives, either constrains them or gives them enough flexibility to, to get it done. And then tonight, where Jim started the discussion, is that a lot of this would normally be covered in that discussion with staff. We'd have to decide tonight whether there's some detail that's missing that we would not approve or that we need in order to move forward tonight. Because it's clear the neighborhood wants this. I mean, everybody that has spoken to us is so happy that you're coming. And now it's just a question of some of these details around how parking works and, and whether there's valet or not. And is it disruptive to parking on streets, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I think, you know, open communication is just how it has to be.
So, right, the question is, do you want to do a approval resolution with your conditions? And then we, Greg Need and I review it and make sure that their final documents beat all of that before they're signed? Or do you want them to revise those documents and bring them back for you to look at and approve yourselves at a future meeting?
Right. I think that's where we're at. One of those two. Any other questions for them? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion?
How would you phrase that first option or go for it? I have some contingencies on here. I want to make sure I include them all. So is, I don't want Jim to have a heart attack when I give him this haphazard resolution. Missing something, I don't, I want this to be dialed in. So I guess what's the best way to do that I can...
I would suggest making the motion with your contingencies and it will pass or fail. But I suspect that your contingencies are what people are thinking.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
All right. Mayor, I move to request the transfer in a Class C liquor license for Ponte Sisto LLC be approved and that the mayor, city clerk, city manager and city attorney be authorized to sign... and that the mayor, city clerk, city manager and city attorney be authorized to sign the agreement contingent upon, one, the hours of operation to reflect agreed upon changes, that being ten PM on Thursdays and nine PM on Sundays. Two, specific spaces for carryout with appropriate signage. Three, add QR code or similar for direction on online and in restaurant menu. And four, addition of at least one bike rack to the premises.
Is there a second for that? Oh, are you, before I ask for the second?
I second.
All right, we have a second. Um, discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um.
I'm looking at you, but I.
I know. So Mayor, can I ask, can I ask? Do we feel that this, um, takes care of all of the questions regarding flow of traffic and things like that? Um, and, um, um, valet and all of those types of hurdles that we were talking about?
I think that I would like to see in the operating agreement, something specific. Again, because of the conflicting information right now, something very specific, um, about the Fairwood part, the Fairwood lot and the Wellesley lot. So there was that in the plan of operation versus the operating. It didn't specify that. It said, no parking on Fairwood Road. So I'd like them to be consistent Fairwood Lot, Wellesley Lot.
That, um, parking will be there and not on the roads?
Uh, not on the roads. Because if you read it, hold on, let me pull it up now. What it says now is just conflicting between the two documents. So employees of the, oh, specific to employees, employees of the restaurant should not park in the off-street parking space defined in the site plan on Fairwood Ave. Neither employees of the restaurant nor any valet parking shall park vehicles in off-street parking along Fairwood Ave. So that's what it says now. And then on the next, in the next document, it says, or in the document before, it says, sorry, I'm talking through this as I'm doing it.
That was what my comment was. Sorry.
One of them says that the employees are to park in the Wellesley.
In the Wellesley lot. So there was, so I would like, I would like it, at the end of the day, I would like it to say, if I had my choice, Fairwood Lot, Wellesley Lot, no street for employees and for.
Essentially, employees, um, shall not use street parking.
Right. Or employees shall park in the Wellesley lot.
Yeah.
Street parking, Woodward has street parking.
Oh, right. Right. We have to be careful.
Be careful.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So again, just clarification on, on, on that.
Would you, Jim, would you prefer that to be specific now or as part of your final?
Well, we'd need the guidance and it would, it would be best if, if the intent was to keep it off residential streets.
Yeah.
To say, no residential street parking.
Okay.
Right.
Is that, Anne, what do you think about that?
That is definitely helpful.
Okay.
Yeah. For, and is this for employees or we're saying for also for?
I would think for all, right?
Can?
Can we do that though? It's a, it's a street.
If, if it's a street, that's not a permitted street, of course.
For the valet, you can't, but if customers parking on the street.
Right, we, we can't, yeah, exactly.
So I would say employees and valet is how I would do it.
On residential streets.
On residential streets. Obviously, we can't stop.
Right, like as you said, you double park when you get carryouts. Like, like it just.
Don't be me!
But I'm saying like individuals make individual choices. Individuals will choose to come to their restaurant and leave their car or take their bike or walk.
We will bring you the pizza.
Right, no, 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 no. Listen, I've learned, but I think what we can at least control or try to monitor or maintain is employees and, and valet. But of course, yeah, individual, individuals can.
So that there's a clear policy for employee, for the people that the restaurant can control-ish.
Right.
Control.
So that would be my, that would be my desire, employee and valet.
Mm-hmm. And was there anything else that, um?
Yeah, that I missed?
Did you want to address the deliveries?
Yes.
In, I guess in what capacity?
Delivery and, so delivery, um.
Delivery before eleven AM.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, that delivery.
Or is that?
Or, I mean, that's a tough one.
That's tough.
Uh-huh.
I would just, the thing they can control is, is have making sure that the other vehicles don't stop in the alley.
Exactly. Right. That's really the, the issue, not the time.
Right.
Yeah.
So where are they?
They don't block traffic and they don't block individuals' garages or access to their garage. Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
And even more specific is that they, because they don't own the delivery company, uh, they work with the delivery company to keep it unblocked. Yeah.
And then are we comfortable with the parking for the delivery services, like the Grubhub and things and the, is there anything specific?
That was a comment.
It's in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Signage and dedicated spot, yeah. Spot, spots, one spot, two spots.
Okay.
But yeah, like Green Lantern or Vincetta, all these have like one or two spots and it makes a big difference. Okay. Or Chris Bell's or whatever.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Not for me.
So we would need a motion to amend.
To amend.
The motion.
Yeah.
Or, or Chris could concur with those items five and six, the, you know, no residential street parking for employees and you know, work with the delivery companies to prevent it blocking, blocking driveways.
You can play that back.
Two concur.
I, I.
Yeah.
I have one bike rack.
Yeah, bike rack, bike rack.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that'll be five and six.
And employee and valet.
Do you concur?
I do concur.
I concur.
Okay. All right. Are we ready for a vote? Any other comments?
I, I would have a comment. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm excited to have this business. I think this, I speak for a lot, a lot of, a lot of us in the city and we just, I think Kelly said it, the communication is gonna be key and that's what we're looking for. We want this to be a good fit. We have a really welcoming and warm community to be a part of. And I, I don't want anyone to take advantage of that. I want this to be a, a symbiotic relationship where if there is a resident concern and something is going on that we, it's taken seriously and it's addressed. And I, I hope that that's gonna be reflected in, in the fact that we're putting this faith in, in moving forward if that does, if the vote does reflect that. So the communication's key and, and I appreciate it.
Yeah. And we're very grateful for what you provided us over the last month. Other than a slice of pizza, I think I got everything.
Yeah, when can we try?
I'm really curious about the, the taste of the pizza, so. So, uh, but yeah, we're just, I mean, I, it's not often that you, uh, all of the feedback that we receive from residents is almost completely all positive. And this is one of those instances where everybody that has written back has said, we've got some things that we want to make sure are good for the community, but as a general statement, everybody's excited for you to be here. So this is great news.
Thank you.
And that.
And then the other thing is just making sure that the residents have an easy way that they can reach out to you guys and, um, everyone. Because they'll be, of course, you know, getting up and running. It's always nice to be able to just know that they really can easily, you know, talk to you as stuff is going on. Um, cause not everybody's gonna be comfortable coming over to the restaurant. It's like some of it is just, like, if they can have email addresses and a phone number, that would be.
Absolutely. And keep in mind that I'm a resident, right?
Yes.
Easily accessible, nineteen Cambridge.
Excellent. All right.
All right, um, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Welcome to the legislature. All right. Okay, I, I think we're, I guess postulate, not even waiting for the city manager to vote.
Wait, 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 wait.
So do I.
I'm not offended. You guys can.
Yeah, we're gonna leave too. I'm, I'm going to his meeting.
So bad. Oh, we're not done.
We're not done.
Yeah, no, I think it did. My only actual concern is that the hours were a little confused, but I think he'll.
He'll.
He'll make it tight. Yeah. No, no, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have said yes. I think that it was a good. I didn't think I was gonna feel comfortable moving forward, but.
Yes. Here we are.
All of these people and nobody.
It's a great site. It's good energy.
Yeah.
Oh, very good energy.
Absolutely.
What's the big deal?
It is.
It's symbolic, it's symbolic. I'm gonna try this pie.
Yeah.
Hope it's good.
Roman pizza.
Always, we're gonna have to have another meeting.
No.
When they were just like, okay.
All right.
I mean, what is the city manager for today?
I think I'll, I think I'm gonna get us back together here so we can finish up.
Yeah.
All right. So Jim? What's the, what is the city up to?
Fighting reception line back.
Right.
I know, it's.
Who does really?
I know. All just.
Uh, I don't have much. Um, we are in design for the Oakdale Water Main. Uh, I know there have been some questions about what the pink stakes are, uh, out on Oakdale.
Oh, the pink stakes are the Oakdale water project. Okay.
They are, yes. It's, and it's surveying pickups, uh, for the, uh, for the design plans for that water main. So. Uh, we, Kensington is designed and approved. Uh, we've applied for the grant, the non-competitive grant that we've been, uh, allocated by the federal government and we've applied and we've been told that they won't have time to review that. We applied in mid-August and they're not gonna have time to review it till October. So we continue to wait. Um, that's what's holding up Kensington is just getting that federal money that we were awarded. So Oakdale again was advanced into design early, uh, because of the 1.8 million we got from the state for, um, we talked about that extensively last month. So if you're wondering what those are, that's what those are. Probably late twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five for Oakdale for construction.
That's awesome.
Just once we get through the whole, you know, cause you have to get the design approved by Eagle and, um, and everything else. So. We're moving forward with that. Um, beyond that, I don't have anything specific, uh, this month unless anyone has any questions for me.
I had a couple of questions we've seen online around Knox. Has, are things moving?
They're moving along. Uh, Knox, they've, they, uh, they picked up their building permit yesterday.
Awesome.
And, uh, they're working towards their site engineering approval. Cause they do have to, they're knocking down the back of the building and building a new parking lot, putting in the rain garden. So they had to, um, get site engineering approval from the city engineer for that. They've, uh, submitted once. The engineer had comments that they needed to address and they're working towards getting those addressed. So. Should start to see some motion, um, some actual progress on site soon.
Great. All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Quick one.
Yeah.
Jim, what, what will the Oakdale Water Main entail? What, what would that look like? Is it the entire length of the street? What are we, what are we doing?
So it's, it's the entire length of the street, all the way from the wall down to Cambridge.
Okay.
Um, and all the lead service lines.
Okay.
All at the same time.
Gotcha.
So, uh, if you've seen consumers when they're doing their gas line projects, it's going to look very similar to that.
Okay.
Uh, we will, um, almost certainly be using the same directional drilling process where they dig holes, you know, at period, uh, periodic lengths across the street and then directionally drill a new water main in and then just abandon the old one underground.
Okay.
Does require some additional excavation where they have to make those new connections to the main for the new service lines. Um, so then they have to pothole a few locations to, to get that, those new, um, service lines connected to the main. Um, again, why Kensington and Oakdale first? They're long streets with a lot of houses on them and a lot of lead service lines. So we're prioritizing where we have the most lead service lines attached to a water main, why we're doing those water mains first. And then as we get down into the future, we'll start to prioritize the water mains we do to, to build out a more, um, looped and connected system. So that, you know, the water has new water mains to distribute through town. Um, you know, cause right now.
You don't get the cratering.
Uh, yeah. And you have to, you know, the water comes into the city, um, at Woodward and Oak, or Oxford. It has to get to all these places and doing the Oakdale Water Main is not gonna help the system work better. So we'll get to that once we get some of these high-density lead service line streets done.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I do have a question, well, comment and a question. Um, it's been exciting to see Sylvan and the two-way traffic that, or the two-way parking on the first block, which has been great. And I think there has been some comments that I've seen online about how they have seen a slowdown in traffic, which is great. But it does make me think about Woodward Heights and do we have an update on, um, timing of?
Right. So that has to be bid out. Um, Sylvan's easy. We had to put up a new sign and take a couple down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Woodward Heights requires, uh, paint and a lot of, you know, road work that we have to bid out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that, those bid documents are going out probably tomorrow.
Okay.
So we'll get those bids back and then, um, proceed.
Excellent.
With getting that work done.
Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you very much.
So still, still looking to get that done this fall.
Awesome. Wow, that's great.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
We'll have a lot of road stuff done by end of this year, hopefully.
Yeah. I'd like to be done with road stuff for a while.
I know, you could like see the weight on your phone.
Um, any other business from anyone?
Mayor?
Yeah.
So, um, I got a message that Ridge Resale is going to be ho- opened during the hayride on October tenth.
Oh, cool.
From ten AM till two PM. So make sure to visit. Hopefully they, um, they accept cash, so make sure to bring cash. I think they're working on Venmo, but there is no promise. But, um, yeah, the, they have been having some really, they have lots of fun stuff in there. So check it out.
Do they need anything there or is there any different kinds of items or are they chock full?
No, always bring more. So definitely, that's a good time. Also from ten to two on Saturday, October tenth, you can bring in donations. And so they take, they don't take books and large furniture, but they take small furniture things and all kinds of home goods. And it is a great place to find, um, just all kinds of wonderful and rare things and great goofy clothes. So, and, and beautiful clothes. So. It's lovely. Men's and women's. No kids.
Anne, I'm sorry, did you say they're open during the Fall Fest?
Yes.
Okay, cause that is October eighth. It's a Sunday from four to six.
Okay. Then I've got dates wrong. Hold on. So.
Oh.
I just wanted to.
Get the date right.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Hold on, let's see. Um, the, yes, they're gonna be open during that and then I wonder, they're probably open.
Uh, the tenth is probably our meeting.
October. So the, you're right, it is. Um, so they'll be open. When is it? The eighth?
Sunday.
Sunday, the eighth, four to six.
Sunday, the eighth. I'm wondering if, yeah. And then they'll probably be open another time, but just stay tuned. We'll let you know.
You can follow them on Facebook too. They have a Facebook page too.
They do. And they'll be in the Ridger. Their dates will be. But it's a great place. Make sure to go shop. Thanks. That's all I got.
All right.
As inaccurate as that is.
Hey, we got it, we got it at the end.
Ridge resale.
Right.
Shop.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready to adjourn. Uh, may I have a motion?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Anne? Do we all agree?
Sure.
Yeah. As though.
Thanks, everyone.